It is now six thirty and I ask that you please rise and join me with invocation to be given by Pastor Sandra Brown with Glen Haven Baptist Church in McDonough and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much, Lord, for the opportunity we have today to come before you and ask for your blessing upon each and everything that happens in this meeting tonight. We thank you for these men and women who serve our county as commissioners. We pray, God, you'd give them wisdom and God lead their lives and, and Father, we pray, Lord, that you'd help each and every one of us tonight to seek your face, Lord. We need your leadership in our lives personally, we need your leadership, Lord, in our lives in this community. We pray for your will to be accomplished, Lord, not only personally, but, Father, corporately as a county. And we pray, heavenly Father, you'd meet the needs of this county. We pray for the success, Lord, of this county in every way, Lord, financially and spiritually as well, Lord, and we pray for the safety of this community. And we pray, God, that the success of this community, Lord, will be, we believe, dependent upon also, Lord, our public safety and we pray, God, you'd meet the needs so that we might be able to have a safe community and a successful community. We pray, Father, now for your leadership tonight. May each and every one, Lord, act in a way, God, that would honor you. And I pray, God, decisions will be made, Lord, in this meeting, Father, not dependent upon political parties or personal agendas, will be made, Lord, because, Lord, we believe it's in accordance with your will. We ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight and we'll thank you for it. We ask it in Jesus' name and for Jesus' sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor.
This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order and we will now move into the acceptance of the agenda and it has been requested that our county manager's item number fifteen A regarding the 2017 Transportation Improvement Program project be moved up on the agenda to item eleven B. I now call for a motion to accept the agenda as amended. I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we will now move into item five regarding the proclamation for our emergency medical services and we'll ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to please come forward and we'll take pictures, Board, after all of the proclamations have been read.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
And for the audience's sake, we will take pictures of each proclamation, as you said, after all of them have been read. And tonight we start with a proclamation. Recognizing National Emergency Medical Services Week from May twenty first to twenty seventh, EMS Strong is this year's theme. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services team consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that May twenty first through twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen, shall be known as National Emergency Medical Services Week in Henry County and they encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This sixteenth day of May, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun.
Thank you. We now have the proclamation for the Salvation Army Week.
Again, Chair and Commissioners, we have a proclamation in honor of Salvation Army Week. Whereas since its founding in Great Britain in eighteen sixty-five, the Salvation Army has provided humanitarian relief and spiritual guidance to people throughout the world and its members continue in their compassionate tradition of helping wherever there's hunger, disease, destitution, or spiritual need. And whereas through countless acts of service, members of the Salvation Army actively assist those who suffer in body and spirit and their victories result in shelter for the homeless, food for the hungry, and self-sufficiency for the disabled. And whereas with an altruistic spirit, the Salvation Army serves the people of Henry County with unshakable faith in all, no matter how desperate the situation, and views all people as people with possibilities. And whereas the Salvation Army acts on behalf of all residents of our community with neither salvation or any other condition as a prerequisite, nor expecting any thanks, yet nonetheless welcoming community's support. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of May fifteenth through May twentieth, two thousand seventeen, be recognized as Salvation Army Week in Henry County. And we encourage all citizens to join in saluting the steadfast men and women who serve those in need and renew the heart of our community by their quiet service and compassion. This sixteenth day of May, two thousand seventeen, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by Stephanie Braun, County Clerk.
Thank you. We will now have the proclamation for Older Americans Month, rather.
Yes. Tonight we have a proclamation in honor of Older Americans Month. Whereas Henry County includes a community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions to our nation and our community. And whereas Henry County recognizes that older adults are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas this year's theme, Age Out Loud, highlights what older adults have to say as they focus on independence, strive for wellness, and for advocating themselves through new work and new passions, engaging in their communities and finding a new voice that reflects today's older adults. And whereas we appreciate the value of inclusion and support in helping older adults successfully contribute and to benefit from their communities. And we are committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activities, wellness and social involvement, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living and ensure community members can benefit from the contributions and experiences of older adults. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that May two thousand seventeen be recognized as Older Americans Month. And we encourage every resident to take time this month to encourage, to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community. This sixteenth day of May, two thousand seventeen, signed by Chair June Wood and attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We will now have a recognition of Ms. Janie McGarrity for years of service on the Council of Aging.
We do. Tonight we recognize Janie McGarrity with a certificate of appreciation and this certificate reads, "This certificate is awarded to Janie McGarrity from the Henry County Council on Aging. For her twenty-nine years of devoted service to the Henry County Council on Aging, the Henry County Senior Services Department, and for her many years of volunteering, organizing, and working to benefit the senior citizens of Henry County. Utilizing her time, talents, and efforts, the Henry County Board of Commissioners offers its sincerest gratitude."
Thank you.
And we're going to call up each, again, please.
Before we ask everyone to come over, any comments from any of the Commissioners regarding any of the proclamations and recognition? Commissioner Warren?
Yes, I would also want to thank Ms. Janie McGarrity for all her years of service. Her and Mr. Florence, there's no doubt about it, is a pillar of Henry County and what you've done has just been tremendous and you have changed so many lives and we just appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
So we're going to call each one up for photos with the Board. And the first will be Representatives for the EMS Proclamation and we'd also like to call up Assistant County Manager Brad Johnson, who is our Regional Representative on the EMS Board, Georgia EMS Board.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioners?
If we could now have members to pick up the Older Americans Month proclamation?
Thank you. We will now move into our consent agenda and the following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. A resolution for the Henry County Fire Department to accept a grant from the Georgia Association of Emergency Medical Services in the amount of fifteen thousand, three dollars and sixty-nine cents to purchase trauma equipment, supplies, and funding for EMS-related training for our Henry County Fire Department. And also a resolution accepting a donation to the Henry County Fire Department of ten thousand dollars from Pine Crest Baptist Church of McDonough, Georgia. In human resources, we have a resolution to amend the Aetna Medical Advantage Plan Year for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. I now ask, is there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Here are nine. May I now open the floor for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
To move.
Got a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Well, this ends our consent agenda. We will now move into the public hearing and adoption of our proposed two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen annual budget and we ask Ms. Sherri Hobson Matthews, our county manager, to come and present the proposed budget.
Good evening, Chair and Board Members, and I apologize in advance, I'm a little under the weather, so just bear with me. Again, thank you so much this evening for allowing myself and Brad Johnson, our Assistant County Manager, to present to you our fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget. As you all are aware, we've had two meetings with the Board and two public hearings with the Board to go over the details of our budget, more particularly what some of the needs are within our county as requested not only by our department is, but by our constitutionals and our elected officials. Both Brad, myself, and the entire budget team feel very confident in that the budget that we're presenting you this evening represents the needs of our county for this current fiscal year, but certainly taking into consideration some long-term planning that we've talked to you all about previously in terms of defining what our roles are as a county government and what services we are going to continue to provide. I've gone through PowerPoint presentations on two previous occasions, so Brad and I this afternoon or this evening will just hit some of the highlights for you all. As you all are aware, we are currently under our FY seventeen budget, which was adopted at one forty-two, five sixty-two, eighteen. We've had about two point five million dollars worth of amendments to that budget, which took our actual budget to one forty-five, one twelve. When the initial requests went out to all of our departments, we were asking the departments to prepare a budget based on what your needs are, what services you know that you need to provide, and how are we going to get to providing those services. The initial request that came in for FY eighteen was two hundred and one million dollars, two hundred and one million, three fifty-five, five forty-eight. Of that two oh one, that also included about thirty-two point five million dollars worth of capital requests. So our starting point for FY eighteen was the one forty-five, six twenty-six, nine thirty-seven and we had about a nine point five million dollar additional operational need. Now you may ask, why is the starting point of FY eighteen the one forty-five, six? Well, that's a result of the number of amendments that have occurred since the adoption of the Board that were not one-time expenditures but carryover expenditures. We also had to consider our contributions to other agencies. As you all are aware, we currently provide contributions to our Health Department, our Counseling Center, DFAX, and the Library. As you'll notice, we've outlined our contributions since FY thirteen to present. You will see under the Health Department, Counseling Center, and DFAX, there has been a reduction in the amounts that we are contributing, but this has been a reduction over the course of every year. For the Library, we did actually increase the amount because obviously we've increased some of our resources here at the county level, so we did increase the allocation for the Library.
So Commissioners, what's new for fiscal year two thousand eighteen? This year, as you know, in the last meeting, the health insurance was encumbered by the Commission, the full amount, with no increase for the employees of our county, which is four million, three hundred, six thousand, four hundred and eighty. We also have the salaries at the rec center, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Salaries for three-quarters a year for Station Fifteen and a full year for Station Sixteen to go online this year at one million, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, three ninety. Additional library funding at five hundred thousand. New positions, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and ten. Salary increase, all personnel across the board, two percent, non-public safety at seven seven six, three ninety-seven, and public safety employees that are one and one, one percent across the board are raised and one percent COLA to keep us on track with our public safety reset plan in our charts. We also have a certification increase allocation of five hundred thousand dollars, which gives us the nine million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollar increase. So our revenue scales, you'll see now that fifty-three point six, three percent come from property taxes. Our sales and use taxes is twenty-two point ninety-one. We have license permit at two percent, intergovernmental grants, point six nine, government charges for fee, or charges for fee for services at ten point four, one percent, fines and forfeiture three point six, miscellaneous revenues two point oh, other sources point seven six, with a total revenue of one forty-seven, seven nineteen, nine nine seven, with a used fund balance of six million, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four to equal to one fifty-four, three five seven, two seventy. And recap where our allocations go. Our legislative branch of Henry County, nineteen million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and nine, which is only twelve point four one percent. Unallocated costs, seven million, five eighty-four, five twenty-nine. Judicial, sixteen million, six forty-nine, two oh nine. Our public safety, seventy-eight million, four hundred and ninety-eight, three hundred and ninety-four. Public works, twelve million, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight. Health and welfare, six million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, eight ninety-three. Cultural recreation, six million, five oh nine, two ninety-six. Housing and development, three million, eighty thousand, one sixty-nine. Other uses of four million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, oh ninety-three, giving us our total budget this year for fiscal year eighteen at one fifty-four, three fifty-seven, two seventy.
So this evening, Board, you have a resolution before you, which outlines all of the individual funding sources, total revenues, and expenditures. I do want to read through for the wherashes, but I certainly will not read all of them, now therefore be it resolved, because it is available for your viewing and for individuals that may want to request a copy. But whereas a balanced budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, beginning July first, two thousand seventeen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, has been submitted to the Henry County Board of Commissioners by the county manager and assistant county manager. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has reviewed said proposed budget, and whereas the entire budget has been available for public inspection and a public hearing, has been properly advertised and held as required by Georgia law. And whereas the requested new positions and the requested upgrades that are shown in Attachment A shall be approved with this resolution and no further action by the Board of Commissioners shall be required departmentally, and unallocated budgets will reflect the FY eighteen adopted budget. And whereas Henry County full-time and/or regular-time, part-time employees, NSP employees, and CDBG employees are the only non-public safety employees who will receive the amount of increase that the Board of Commissioners adopts in the FY eighteen budget. And whereas the following positions will not receive the amount of the increase that the Board of Commissioners adopts in the FY eighteen budget. Bailiffs, elected officials, appointed officials, supplemental, grant, poll workers, seasonal, temporary, and school crossing guard positions. And whereas any employee that is employed less than a year from the date of adoption of this resolution will not receive said increases. Now therefore be it resolved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, as the governing authority of said county, that the budget resolution of Henry County for fiscal year seventeen eighteen shall be adopted upon approval at this public meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And again, it's as follows, and you have multiple sections. Section one, which is our general fund. Section two, SPOSS two funding. Section three is our SPOSS three fund. Section four is our SPOSS four. Section five, Law Library Fund. Section six, NSP Program Fund. Section seven is our NSP three program fund. Section eight is our CDBG Grant Fund. Section nine is our Confiscated Assets Fund. Section ten is our E nine one one, Emergency Communications Fund. Eleven, Special Court Victim Witness Fund. Section twelve is our Technology Fund. Section thirteen is our Juvenile Assistance Fund. Section fourteen is our Economic Development Fund, which is also our Development Authority. Section fifteen is our Hotel Motel Tax Fund. Section sixteen is our Impact Fee Fund. Section seventeen is our Debt Services Fund. And section eighteen is our Stormwater Fund. Section nineteen, Airport Fund. And section twenty is our Confield Golf Course Fund. Finally, section twenty are our other provisions and stipulations, which outlines the fiscal policy, including our policies and procedures. Myself and/or Brad will be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions to our county management team? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing and comments will now be taken from citizens and we ask that you state your names and address before making comments and each public person may have five minutes to speak. So we're now calling upon anyone that would like to speak.
Yes, my name is Nicholas Day. I'm a retiree of the county after sixteen years. I've been retired for ten and a half years. The big thing I came here today for was our new insurance program. You gave us Medicare Aetna. In the last ten and a half years, I have never paid a copay. I have never paid anything because we had Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Medicare. Whether you know it or not, Medicare pays eighty percent, so the insurance company only had to pay twenty, never any more than twenty. Then if they accepted Medicare, then they paid nothing. So now I'm going to be required to take a test for MRI, CT scan, or blood work and it's going to cost me twenty percent. So I'm totally unhappy and not pleased with this plan that y'all put forth for us retirees of Henry County. You know, y'all looked after us in the past and when I look up there on the Board, I see no member that I came here before, when I used to come before the Board for business license or alcohol. But I do say this, gosh, I just noticed that this is a month for older Americans. That's kind of funny to me because this older American just got thrown under the bus because with this twenty percent copay that we're going to be required in the future, that means to me if I take an MRI test or CAT scan test, that's going to cost me eight to nine hundred dollars, easy. Because I know a current county employee that's going through this difficulty because he's on the eighty-twenty plan, but he's under sixty-five. Now I don't understand why, because I'm sixty-five years older, that I'm forced to take this plan. I would have basically loved to paid Blue Cross, Blue Shield more money and stayed under the same plan and never paid a copay to a doctor or never paid a twenty percent copay for any type of test I ever received. So for ten and a half years, I have enjoyed the Medicare plan along with the Blue Cross, Blue Shield, or whether it was the other insurances that the county has done. But this year, you throw the retirees under the bus and the retirees are going to suffer from it in the future. Most of us stayed with the county. We served you correctly and to our best of our ability and a lot of us just stayed for the fact of taking our insurance with us. And now I'm looking and saying, I'm going to pay these people to be the overseer of my Medicare? That kind of scares me because now I'm told that the Aetna card will be the only card I show a doctor. I show a doctor, and not my Medicare card. So that kind of scares me of what's going to happen to that in the future. And the only reason we stay with you is because we know if we ever leave you, we can't come back. So if we ever cancel our insurance, then we're totally out of luck. So I look up there, and I see maybe one or two of you is getting close to 65, and I understand that when you get 65, you automatically own Medicare. Now, I've been put told that cause I'm 65 and a retiree and not working for the county, that I'm forced to go with this plan. I'm totally unhappy with it, and I want y'all to know that. And I want y'all to know that this is not the right way to treat a retiree from the county that's helped you grow to the possibilities that you are now. You're a huge county. We helped you grow there. We gave you our best services, and then what do we receive in return? You know, I didn't buy the golf course. I didn't buy downtown. I know what you spent on SPOSS. I know what you... I was one of the first people that moved into this new building, so I understand where everything's come from, and I'm just sad to see that you're going to throw the retirees 65 and older under the bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Okay. You have money on the table that is not being considered at all. The money on the table comes from, let's see, oh yeah, the Water Authority? That's two mills. Now, I don't know how many mills you want to increase our taxes, but you will increase our taxes, because that's what the county does. $12 million on the table from the Water Authority. 12 million. How much is this budget increase? Let's see, that was about $10 million. You've got a $20,000 or $30,000 increase for the Water Authority CEO. Somebody's not using the money the way it's supposed to be used. Somebody. Are you told what to do with these budgets, or do you actually have some input on how this money is spent? I really would like to know that. And I would like to know, through a show of hands, just a show of hands, you don't have to utter a word, how many of you consider public safety to be the paramount importance of your job right now? Show of hands. Wow. The people think it's important. The people think that it's the most important thing that you do, is to provide those services. So when you throw out a paltry $5 million there to the Fire Department and the Police Department, you're not serving the people of this county. You're serving somebody else. We require that you, as elected officials, be the public servants you were elected to Raising our taxes is not something that anybody here wants. Raising our taxes is nothing that you need to do when you have money on the table. There's 12 million for you to pluck right there whenever you're good and ready. The Water Department has, Water Authority has been getting that money since, what, the '60s? I don't know how long it's been going on, but it's been going on a long time. That's two mills you can take off the budget and put it to good use. Bring us some more officers. Increase their pay. Give them the tools that they need. You know what your job is. We know what your job is. Please, for the love of God, do it.
Thank you. Are there other comments?
My name is Larry Maury, and I predict that y'all are going to raise as many as a couple of mills. I may be wrong. I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think I'm going to be. You know, I was a Commissioner as well, but I didn't raise taxes. I went back and redone the budget. And most of all, I bided things off, and I've been asking y'all for two years to bid, and it's just like talking to the thin air. You know, Jane Rutledge, y'all, I'm sure most of you know her. Her husband drove a bus in this county, and each one of you allowed Buddy Welch and the insurance company to manipulate that poor man to where he didn't have an income at all.
Mr. Maury, will you please speak to the item that you want to speak to without naming names?
Well, how can you say the truth? How can I tell the truth? Say number one person and number two person? Is that what you want me to do?
Just would like to speak to the county business at hand, please.
And you know, we allow things to be manipulated, and rather than bid, we just keep manipulating, keep raising taxes. Just keep raising taxes. You know, I was in my church Sunday morning, and we were talking about Henry County and the taxes and the situation with trucks and so forth, and several of them in that room said, "We got a remedy for it. We just going to move out, because we are tired of it." But I'm going to promise you something. If you raise taxes one mill, and don't legislative recapture that $2 million from that Water Authority, if you raise taxes one mill, and don't bid things off before you do that, I'm going to promise you one thing. I'm going to walk the streets of this county and the intersections of these highways till we vote every one of you out of office. This has got, this craziness has got to quit. If you can't bid it off, we can replace you. And tonight, we're going to prove it a little bit later on with some facts. So y'all keep spending. The day's coming.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Well, this now concludes our public hearing for the FY17, FY18 budget, and we'll ask the County Manager to come forward again regarding the resolution. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Any comments or questions from the County Management Team?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. The floor is now open for a motion to accept the resolution for the budget that is presented today.
I make a move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second, Chairman.
We have a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, sorry. Okay.
And my concern was around the retired employees and the Medicare Advantage Program. You know, that's kind of, that kind of has bothered me over the past few weeks, and I was wondering if we could maybe take another look at that portion of it.
While we're talking, just direct a question to our County Manager.
Yes, sir, we can certainly, I'll get with Mr. Day and find out what his concerns are, but as you all are aware, we've already acted on the resolution, and we've already completed open enrollment on May 30th. That's when our current insurance coverage will end, and then we'll move into June 1st with the Aetna Medicare Advantage. Is there particular questions that you have?
Well, I'm concerned about what the gentleman said earlier regarding the extra money that he will have to pay out of pocket. So how does that work in comparison to the plan that our regular employees have?
Well, certainly, there are separate plans that we have. We have our full-time employees that are on a current plan, and then we do have our Kaiser Plan that's also an option. This year, as we indicated to the Board, we were trying to look at ways in which we could reduce the burden, not only on our employees, but the costs that the county's having to pay out as well. The Aetna Medicare Advantage certainly presented itself in which we could provide some reductions to our current costs, and certainly the costs that the employee is having to pay in terms of their premium costs did not increase. It's my understanding, listening to Mr. Day this evening, that he is having to incur some costs that he previously did not have to incur. And again, I apologize for not being prepared, but this is the first time it was brought to our attention. What we will do is certainly get his information. Our HR Director is here. I'll make sure I forward that information to her as well, and we'll have our benefits team sit down with him, because it may be very different depending on what he's talking about. I know he mentioned MRIs, CAT scans, and things of that nature, but we'll certainly reach out to him and follow up.
If that is the case, is there an opportunity for retired employees to piggyback onto the plan of the regular employees?
No, sir, I would not recommend that, because we've already adopted the plan, and that would certainly change the cost of what we've already projected in our budget. Right now, the $4.5 million increase was a result of us going with the Blue Cross, Blue Shield, the Kaiser, and the Aetna Medicare Advantage with the savings that we were going to capture. If we were to put those employees back on a regular plan, I would imagine that there's going to be an increase to the insurance cost.
Any other questions? Okay, we had a motion and a second. Again, calling for any further discussions. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right, we will now move into the public hearing regarding our Community Development 2017-2019 Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, and we ask Ms. Shannon Sanyar to make the presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Board.
Good evening.
This evening, we are holding our first of two public hearings regarding the development and approval of the 2017 to 2019 Consolidated Plan. Every three to five years, community development block grant entitlement grantees must prepare a complete consolidated plan. The consolidated plan identifies community needs, resources, and priorities. At a minimum, the con-plan will include a description of the county as the lead agency responsible for developing the plan, and a description of the process used or undertaken to develop it, a housing and homeless needs assessment, and a housing market analysis, a strategic plan, and lastly, an annual action plan. This first public hearing is being held during the development of the plan prior to the publication of the plan. The consolidated plan in 2017 Annual Action Plan will be made available later this summer for public review prior to coming before the Board for approval. Plans are due to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in August of 2017. As a part of the planning and development for the Consolidated and Annual Action Plan, we are hosting a series of needs assessment meetings, and those meetings are provided in the schedule on the projector. Previously, the county completed and approved a five-year consolidated plan from 2012 to 2017. However, staff is now recommending a three-year plan, as HUD requires that participants in joint and regional assessments for fair housing are on the same planned schedule and planning year. In 2016, the BOC approved a development of a joint assessment of fair housing with the McDonough Housing Authority. The shortened con-plan is in effort of meeting this requirement, aligning the two entities with HUD's requirement for plans that middles. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. As it was stated, this is a public hearing to receive public comments on the development of this 2017 Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. We will allocate a total of 10 minutes for any persons wishing to speak, and again, ask that if there's anyone that wants to speak to come now, and there will be a total for 10 for all that want to speak. Again, any in favor to speak on behalf of this proposal? Well, thank you. After, since we now have not had anyone, this will conclude our public hearing. Are there any comments or questions now from the Board regarding this presentation? Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question, Shannon. I see you have the McDonough Housing Authority. Are there only municipality that has a housing authority?
There is one in the City of Hampton as well.
Yeah, so are we working with that one as well?
We are happy to work with that housing authority. We have been in conversation with them and are working within the limits that have been provided.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
In addition, we are sending assessments for public housing to both agencies and hope to get as much information back from both of them, and we will utilize that information into the plan in addition to anything that comes directly from the residents. We will also be sending needs assessment surveys to agencies in the community, which we have worked with or just know about from the work that they provide in the community, to determine some needs or some unmet needs in our community, and see how we can include those in the plan to better serve residents in the future.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So if there's a need in the Hampton community, even though the, are you saying that even though the housing authority may not be working with you guys on it, those residents can still get service?
Certainly.
Okay.
Residents of Henry County in general can contact us directly. If we receive calls or inquiries from residents of the housing authority in Hampton in particular, we will reach out directly to that housing authority and make them aware of those concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And as another question, I understand you're also working with the Connecting Henry and their collaborative efforts. Can you speak about that as well?
Yes, ma'am. We will be presenting at the collaborative meeting, I believe, on next Wednesday or Thursday. It is my understanding that there are over 100 agencies represented there, and we look forward to getting their input for our next planning period.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from the Board? Thank you, Ms. Shannon. At this time, there is no action to be taken by the Board on this item. Again, this is a public hearing, and to receive public comment only. So again, we thank you, Ms. Sanyar, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we will now move into the next item that was moved at the request of our County Manager. Item 11B regarding Resolution of Support for Projects for Which Funding Will Be Applied During the 2017 Transportation Improvement Program Project Solicitation. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Board. And before I move into this item, I want to go back to the previous item, because I wanted to thank our staff for their tireless efforts in developing our budget. Myself, Nora Brad, did this alone. It was involvement not only from you all as Commissioners and our department heads, but from some very key staff members here at the county. So I did want to take this opportunity to thank our HR Director, Doris Patterson, our Finance Director, Fred Alletta, and then our Budget Director, Angie Soro. They were very instrumental in helping us get to the point of where we are. Certainly also want to thank Hutch Purvis, our Facility Maintenance Director, Jody Swartz, and our Facilities Department, I mean, our Fleet Services Department, and Skip Floyd on our Technology Services Department, as they are working towards developing that capital project list. So I did, I do want to apologize for not doing that during the previous item, but again, I do want to personally thank staff for their hard work.
Okay, and I would like to also add to that as well, because I did see the work that was behind the scenes on that, developing that budget, and again, there were some tough discussions about it, but again, looking forward to continuing as we move forward. So I too commend the staff as well, along with the other Commissioners that have been involved, to understand the budget as well.
Thank you. The resolution before you this evening is a resolution of support for an additional project to be submitted to the Atlanta Regional Commission during their 2017 Transportation Improvement Program Solicitation. As you all will recall, during the last BOC meeting in May, May 2nd, 2017, the Board did adopt a resolution outlining four additional or four projects that we were going to submit as part of that call for project. After much discussion, a decision was made that we were going to remove the freight cluster plan from the project solicitation, and so that project was not submitted. I must at this time certainly thank Commissioner Wilson for his forethought in working with the City of Locust Grove in adding an additional project within District 1, not only for the residents of Henry County, but also most particularly for the residents within that Locust Grove area and our constituents of District 1. What we have been able to do is to submit another application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, or what we're looking to do is to submit an application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, adding the Bill Cartner Parkway Additional Lane Widening Project. This project will start at I-75, and it will go to State Route 155. I did receive confirmation via email today from the City Manager, Tim I did receive confirmation via email today from the city manager, Tim Young, that the city of Locust Grove actually was briefed on this last night during their city council meeting, and they're in full support and commitment financially if this project is selected by the Atlanta Regional Commission. I think this is certainly a win-win for all, because it not only shows the county's commitment, but it shows the commitment from the city of Locust Grove, and their financial contribution will certainly help in making sure that we meet our match requirements. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. I do want to let you all know that originally, when this was presented, the applications were due on tomorrow. We received notification this afternoon that they have extended that deadline until Friday, May 19, but I am pleased to report that our staff will be submitting our applications on tomorrow. Again, I do want to take this time to thank our staff, because they are behind the scenes doing the work. I'm just up here presenting the information. Stacy Jordan Rudisal in our Planning and Zoning Department, David Simmons in our DOT Department, Wade Stroud in our DOT Department, and Rocky Romero in our Splot Department. So again, I just want to take this time to thank our staff.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Are there any questions from the board regarding this amendment? Go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
The widening of Bill Gardner also extends in the district. I have the south side of Bill Gardner to 155, and District 2 has the north side.
That is correct, and thank you, Commissioner Clemens, as well, for your support of this project.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? The floor is now open for a motion for approval. I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson and the second. Any other comments or discussions regarding? If it's all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move into a public hearing from our Henry County Department of Transportation to abandon and declare a surplus portion of Kellytown Road right-of-way. Mr. Stroud, thank you.
Chair Wood and Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, there's a request to abandon and declare surplus. A portion of Kellytown Road right-of-way is shown on the attached plat marked Exhibit A, and more particularly described on the attached plat is the area in the amount of 0.27 acres. The right-of-way in question contains a section of underground fuel tanks, as well as a portion of the overhead canopy for the commercial business. The area requested to be abandoned and declared surplus no longer serves the general traveling public, and obviously, we would like to get those entities outside of our county right-of-way. The abandonment has been publicly advertised in the Henry Herald on May 3 and 10 of 2017, and all adjoining property owners have been notified by certified mail. Staff recommends the approval of this abandonment and declaration of surplus. Be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Are there any questions from the board regarding this public hearing? Okay. Again, this is a public hearing, so any persons wishing to make comments regarding an opposition to this will have a total of 10 minutes to present their opposition. Of course, there will be 10 minutes allocated for anyone wishing to speak in favor. So we now will call the opportunity for anyone that wants to speak in opposition to this public hearing. Again, making a call of anyone that wishes to speak in opposition. We will now grant 10 minutes to anyone wishing to speak in favor. Calling again for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Well, thank you. This concludes our public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the board again? Okay. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Have a second. Any further comments or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We also have a resolution authorizing the sale of a certain property, so we'll ask Mr. Stroud to please continue.
Thank you again, Chair Wood and fellow commissioners. The board of commissioners heard the abandonment and declaration of surplus property, a portion of Kellytown Road right-of-way, prior to this agenda item today, May 16, 2017, for the area shown in the highlighted Exhibit A. Since the abandonment and declaration of the surplus item was approved, this request is to authorize the sale of the declared surplus property shown on Exhibit A per OCGA 32-7-3 and 32-7-4, subsequent to the county's receipt of the appraisal. The area in question available to be disposed of is 0.27 acres, and as highlighted on the attached plat marked Exhibit A. The different color shade or hatched areas represent portions of the right-of-way that are subject to be sold to each adjoining owner and/or to the previous owner. The county is also in the progress of having an appraisal done for the property in question. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions to Mr. Stroud regarding this resolution? The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve, Chair.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Stroud.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're now moving to a resolution from Facility Maintenance, and we'll just ask Mr. Hutch Purvis to come and make the presentation.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Board. Due to the severity of the need, the Henry County Facility Maintenance Department requests that the roof of the Harvey Building located at 333 Phillips Drive in McDonough be replaced. U.S. Communities, a cooperative purchasing agency, has competitively bid and awarded a contract to Garland DBS. The contract number is 14-5903 for complete turnkey roofing services. The Henry County Facility Maintenance Department requests to utilize the U.S. Community Contract with Garland for a complete roof replacement with a 30-year warranty in the amount of Henry County Facility Maintenance has requested available funds from the fund balance for this service and approves budget amendment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Purvis. Are there any questions regarding this? Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question for you, Hutch, in reference to our two tenants that are in that building.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any idea what their rental fee is?
I'm not sure exactly. That would be maybe a budget department question.
Yeah, because my concern is that we're going to be going into the fund balance for $266,000, and I'm just trying to see if that's an urgent situation. And I know as landlords, we need to take care of this.
Right.
But I want to know when their lease is up, how much are they paying?
Right.
And it's a lot of information that I need to look at, spending $266,000 right away when we've got some other capital projects.
Right. This building has been, we'll call it, our hit list for several years now. We've been trying to address it, and as you can see from the illustration here, the picture, you can see the condition that the roof's in.
Yeah, yeah.
With detail around, especially all the roof drains. We got eight roof drains, and we've got major problems around those.
So when is their lease up?
I'm not sure.
We recently renewed the lease, so I think we are probably in the first year of a renewal. Right now, we have the USDA or NRCS that's currently in there, and they're paying about $2,000 a month. There's also ADR, which is the Adult Dispute Resolution Group that's in there, and that's through one of our courts, and they aren't paying anything.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Barron?
Hutch. During some conversations about this building, you had told me that the roof was kind of like a potato chip. When y'all go up there and try to repair leaks, it just gets worse.
That's right.
And out of the top five that need roof replacements, you told me this was number one.
Yes, sir. That's absolutely right.
So regardless of who we're renting out to or whatever, this building needs to be fixed.
Yes, sir. And last year, we went in and actually renovated, I'd say, 85% of the building for ADR and for the USDA. So it's, you know, new carpet, new wall paint, you know, we did a lot of electrical work, and it looks like a new building inside.
Well, and again, if you could speak to the safety issues that are concerned, because that, to me, is what raises it more of a more urgent matter, because of a lot of the safety concerns that have been noted. So can you speak again on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you speak to it again? Can you elaborate on the safety concerns that we have about the roof leak?
Yes, ma'am. Well, you know, of course, with any roof leak, you always have the mold issue that could develop, indoor air quality issues. You also have the potential for fire if it were to get on an electrical outlet or a breaker panel or something of that nature. So, and then you also have slip and fall, you know, on VCT tile, become very slippery.
All right. Commissioner Barron and Commissioner Wilson.
How old is this building?
The building was built back in 1996. Facility Maintenance actually constructed the building.
And the roof has just been, this is the original roof?
It's the original roof. We've, as you can see from the picture, with detail, like around the parapet walls, you can see that we've attempted to make several repairs over the years, you know, and we've had several different roofing contractors out there, and, you know, they all tell us the same thing, you know, it's time. And basically, here's an illustration of the roof that we currently have, and then the new roof. We'll be going from a R-value of 2.78 to an R-20, so we will also save a lot of money on energy heating and cooling that building in the future. And also, I would add that currently, the roof does not meet the current building code or energy code.
Okay, other questions? Commissioner Wilson, I'm sorry.
Hutch, in the replacement of the roof, are the tenants going to be able to continue the day-to-day operations?
Yes, sir. They will.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Clemens?
Hutch, this is a flat roof right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we doing anything with the new roof to make sure that we're not in this situation again in a couple of years, because flat roofs are gonna leak again?
Well, it's gonna be a flat roof, but what we're gonna have is a, the roof's gonna be what I'd say, you know, top quality. It'll be the same roof, basically, that we put on the DFAX building last year, and it's gonna be a good roof. It's 30-year warranty.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, we've heard the presentation of the resolution, and now we're open, the floor open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further comments of questions or so forth discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Purvis, and I understand we've got another item here as well.
Yes. The Henry County Facility Maintenance Department requests the purchase of three used 2012 Azuzu NQR 5.2-liter turbo diesel four-cylinder trucks from Bellamy Strickland Chevrolet in the amount of $80,000. The trucks are equipped with lift gates and will be an asset for Henry, I mean, for facilities maintenance, staff, for hauling, loading, and unloading large, heavy equipment and materials needed in regards to servicing and repairs of our county facilities. Henry County Facility Maintenance has requested available funds from the personnel budget for this purchase and requests a budget amendment in the amount of $80,000. And on the screen, that's a picture of the three trucks. They all look identical.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Purvis regarding this resolution? Commissioner Prince?
I did have some questions, Hutch. Thanks for coming. The mileage on the vehicles, I'm looking at the mileage here. We got $76,116,132.
Right.
Eh, you know, I know they're diesels, and I know diesels will go and go.
Right.
Pretty high. I mean, you're talking 132,000, and we're just getting it. We're gonna put miles on it.
Right. We did a research, and like you said, these diesels are known to get over 400,000 miles on them.
Transmissions go out in them.
Right.
My diesel, I'm on two.
We...
I don't know, that's all the questions I have. I'm gonna have to think about that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I guess I could leap to a question. Is there any level of guarantee with such high mileage?
Right, it's, there as it is. We had Jody and his staff over at Fleet go over and check the trucks out, and they test drove them, and they support the purchase. They said they're good with it.
Commissioner Prince?
What's the cost new, these vehicles?
Sir?
What is the new cost?
For these trucks?
These trucks?
$67,000. If we were to buy one new per truck.
And you're doing 80 for three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion. Calling again, the floor is now open for a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. So all, any further comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving to our planning and zoning items, and we'll ask Mr. Stacy Rudisal to come and present our first public hearing on the ULDC AM 1702.
Good evening, Chair Wood.
Thank you.
Commissioners. The item before you tonight is a public hearing, and it's a request to amend Chapter 7.05.00, which is for wireless communications facilities. The Henry County Code at this time makes no specific provision for small cell technology wireless communications facilities. And so this ordinance amendment would allow such small cell technology facilities within the public right-of-way with certain provisions. The zoning advisory board heard the request on March the 27th, excuse me, the March the 23rd, and does recommend approval.
Okay. We've heard the presentation. Again, this is a, any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Barron?
Go more in detail of what these things are actually gonna look like.
The facilities themselves could be standalone poles, or they could be attached to poles that already exist within the right-of-way. The small cell technologies are defined in the amendment as being either one antenna tower, or perhaps a network of more than one antenna tower that are connected together either underground or above ground.
Okay, Commissioner.
Stacy, could we charge any type of fee for them getting on our right-of-way?
One of the provisions is that if the small cell technology is in front of a piece of property that's zoned non-residential, and if it's less than 70 feet, that we'll treat it as a utility within the right-of-way, and that application would be made through our Henry County Department of Transportation. And I'm not sure exactly what their application fee might be for that.
Could we get any favorable returns, such as a fee line for the county?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Other questions? Commissioner Prince?
A question I have, size of these things, and second question, do we have any control over this once we implement this? And I ask this question because I don't want big nasty-looking poles all over this county in the right-of-way, and they just short-circuit us and don't have to actually go through the whole process, and we don't get to approve, and et cetera, et cetera. I just want to know what we're opening up the door here to.
Yes, sir. The way the ordinance amendment is written, they would be treated as utilities within the right-of-way, and as such, if we require their removal, they will have to be removed at the applicant's expense. So we do have control over them once they are put up in our right-of-way.
You just come in and put them in our right-of-way now without any approval from Henry County?
No, it's our right-of-way. They would have to receive approval as our ordinance allows.
Okay.
So we could say no.
All right, and we do have the right to say no, and we do have some architectural features or something that we're going to review.
As far as architectural features go, it's, the way the ordinance amendment is written, it's limited to the height and the location within the right-of-way.
Because I, I just don't know what these look like, and that's what I'm having trouble with, because again, you know, we have power poles running down through there, but I don't want, you know, three-feet diameter concrete poles running down the right-of-way either. So I'm a little concerned with, that we're opening the door up here a little too much.
And the ordinance amendment doesn't specify whether it would be a metal pole, a wooden pole, or a concrete pole, but it would have to meet the requirements of the ordinance as determined by our county DOT.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Barron, and then I think...
Stacy, one other question. Have you checked other counties to see how they're handling this?
It's my understanding that this is relatively new technology, and not a whole lot of other counties have adopted such an ordinance. Henry County may be one of the first, but it's my understanding that the industry is moving towards small cell technologies that are lower height, as opposed to monopoles of much greater height.
Commissioner Holmes?
What makes me feel comfortable, Stacy, is, you know, we're gonna allow them to come into the county and set up poles, no cost, no charge, and then, when the time comes, they're gonna charge us an arm and a leg to relocate poles and those type of things, as in, you know... as in, you know, with the other utility companies. So I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with this, uh, with this resolution.
Any other, Commissioner Wilson?
Do we have a minimum distance between these, these poles?
No, sir, the ordinance amendment does not specify a, a minimum distance.
So we could have them every two or three hundred feet if they choose to do so?
The, the ordinance doesn't limit it, so if that was what was called for in their network, then potentially, yes.
Okay, other questions or comments before we open up for a public hearing? Yes?
Chair, if I can clarify-
Yes.
Questions that were, that were asked?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Prince asked if we can deny them. They can, an application for one of these sites can be denied if the applicant doesn't meet the objective criteria set forth in the ordinance, which is primarily technical stuff. It's, it, there's not a provision that says, "We just don't want one here, you can't put it here." The, the provisions require things like clear zones, and they have to establish a need. They have to show that there's a, a gap in their signals, which is something we talked about with the cell tower lawsuit a while back. And I don't know, I know you were, someone asked how big these things can be. I think the maximum height is seventy feet.
The maximum height is seventy feet to be treated as a utility. And if, for whatever reason, they can't meet the standard to simply be treated as a utility, they could be approved through an administrative review. And if they don't meet the criteria for an administrative review, then it would require a public hearing by the zoning advisory board for a conditional use approval.
Just like the, basically just like the cell towers are now. And he was correct when he said this is the way the industry is going. Today, the cell tower industry puts those great big monopoles, one, they're roughly every, probably two miles as you go around. And because of the increased demand for cell service, you know, when the monopole model was developed, cell phones were just that. They were just cell phones. And the only signals flying through the air were phone calls. Well, now you've got cell phones, you've got text messages, you've got streaming data. Everybody in this room probably has a smartphone that even while it's sitting in your pocket or in your briefcase, it's sending and receiving data. And the, the idea of this is for the cell tower services to provide that capacity without having to have giant monopoles every two miles. This doesn't con, this ordinance doesn't contemplate just poles. It also contemplates putting the, the transmitting facilities on existing poles, even on buildings, on water towers, on, on things that already exist. The hope is that they would take advantage of things that already exist and not build new poles. But, but you're right, if you're concerned that this ordinance doesn't prevent that, it doesn't. And the reason it doesn't is, I don't think the cell tower industry would take advantage of it. This, this ordinance is one that the, at least one of the participants in the cell tower industry wants to see happen, and I don't, I don't really know what staff's recommendation is on it, but eventually you will see these happen. And I think it's a matter of time. Whether or not you adopt it today, I think is entirely up to you. I'm not advocating for you to do it. I'm relatively neutral on it. But that is the, the basis for these types of ideas. The, they're, the nature of the cell tower transmission business, just like everything else is changing, it's getting away from those monopole massive structures into smaller structures with bigger coverage. That's really what these are about. So that's a, a little bit of background that might help you make your decision.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
High pole would be pretty big in itself. The, the foundation would be monstrous. So I don't know if they're getting away from the monopoles or just making them a little bit smaller, but we'll get back to it after public comment.
Yeah. All right, any other comments or questions from the commissioners before we open it up for the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, and therefore, there would be a total of ten minutes granted for those who wish to speak in opposition. And then likewise, there'd be another ten minutes granted for those wanting to speak in favor. Where now, we'll open it up for anyone that wants to speak in opposition. Please state your name and address, please.
Uh, my name's Nicholas Day. I live on Highway two twelve in Covington, Georgia. The only thing I wanna say is about this is, be aware. They put a cell tower on my property, I get fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month for it. So this is something new, if it becomes a utility. I know I don't have much to say about utilities, 'cause once they're on the right-of-way, they're there. For a million vote line or whatever. And I'm just saying, you need to be aware. You need to write this to where it really makes sense and limits people to do stuff. Because like I said, if I put a cell tower on my property, we get two thousand dollars a month. Just, just a good comment, and I, I would make sure that if these towers or facilities are going anywhere, you know how we've come along in these ages from computers? I worked with a computer when it wouldn't run but one program. I was one of the very first that run a multi-program computer. So I'm just saying that, you know, I'd be careful, because utilities is one thing. And like the man said, when you have to move them to widen the road, or, you know, you have to pay money to put them on southern bells, you know, on their telephone poles. So they even make you pay money. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm not gonna say I'm against this, but you know, the fiber optics goes right down seventy-five in a concrete pipe. And it's been through Henry County for years. We haven't taken advantage of it. Why don't you just, instead of voting when something comes up and voting it up or down, why don't a couple of you study it and figure out, it may be a great thing. It may not be. But at least know the full scope of what the facts are before you address something. And if, sir, you need to do a better job of presenting the plus and the minus.
Mr. Moore, will you please just address the concern? Thank you. Okay, anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Okay, we will now grant ten minutes for anyone that wants to speak in favor.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm Brandy Crawford. I'm with Mobility LLC, and I'm here to speak in favor of the text amendment before you tonight. Um, my company did file the amendment with the planning department. Just by way of background, you do have a small cell in Henry County already. It's located on Fairview Road, and you probably don't notice because it's inconspicuous. It is a utility pole, and at the very top of it is an antenna, a very small antenna. But if you are dri, driving by in front of the oil change shop and the restaurant, you would not notice that it's even there. Wooden pole, about sixty feet tall, antenna at the very top. It provides data coverage, data signal strength for a one-mile radius around it. That's what small cells do, enhance data quality and coverage. It's a very sort of sensitive way for the industry to create better coverage and service for the customers without having to build two-hundred-foot towers on private property. So Mobility has CELEC certification in the state of Georgia, which allows us to sign the right-of-way, but we have to follow local codes and ordinances, which is why we're here tonight. So we would like to build more small cells in Henry County, but need your permission to do that. So we're here to support and ask for your permission to build more small cells. You know, we wanna make sure we build them in a way that's compatible with the streetscape, so appropriate height, material, make sure that we do, you know, underground utilities. If you warned us to do that, we can do overhead connections. We're flexible. We've worked with the Henry County DOT staff several times to meet clear zone requirements. We're flexible in the way that we go about our business. But we certainly need to build a partnership with you in order to do, you know, do our business and make it work for your citizens and also for our clients.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, we've heard those to speak in opposition and in favor. Um, this now concludes our public hearing. Um, are there any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Prince?
This is for Patrick, County Attorney. I know when I was working with the city of Stockbridge, we could charge some for the right-of-way. Can we, can the county?
No. One of the quirks of Georgia law is, is municipalities can charge those franchise fees, much more franchise fees than counties are permitted to charge. I, I don't think we could charge a, a franchise fee for the right-of-way in this instance, because just like she stated, they, they've been certified by the state. I think that grants them the same status as other folks out there.
Okay.
All right, other questions? Comments? All right, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, calling again, the floor is now open for a motion. All right.
Um, Chairman, I, I'm not saying this is a, a bad idea, but I'm not saying it's a good idea, and I'm, I'm gonna just request that we table this until I can actually look at the poles, decide what they're gonna do, 'cause a seventy-foot pole, again, is gonna be pretty big round. And I'm just not sure, wood, concrete, steel, nobody's told me anything. So I don't know, we don't have any architectural features. I don't know where they're gonna go. I just don't know any control that we have. I just need to do a little more research, maybe discuss with the, the vendor at a, at a later date. So I'm, I'm just gonna make a motion to table this, and we'll, we'll get it back on the agenda later.
I already have a motion to table, and I'll make a second. Any questions or comments regarding?
I just wanted to say, Madam Chair, Stacy, Stacy, we just don't have enough information. I mean, there are no photos or, or anything. So in the next resolution, if you can work closer with the county manager to put in some, um, some added language, and also some photos, so you can show the public what, you know, what they're requesting to do.
Okay.
That would be great.
All right, other questions or comments? Commissioner Barham?
I would like for you to reach out to some other communities that has done this to just get some feedback from them.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Clemmons?
And I would just like to urge staff to make sure that we have language in our ordinances, that we don't just put anything in the right-of-ways. We're really concerned about the aesthetics of our community. That's why you worked so hard in doing the Unified Land Development and Overlay District. So I'm concerned about what this will look like and what it makes our community look like.
Okay, other questions or comments? All right, we had a, a first and a second to table this request. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, well, thank you. Okay, we will now move into our next public hearing, and asking Mr. Gibbs to come forth regarding the public hearing regarding zoning issue, RZ seventeen oh four.
Good evening, Chair Wood and Commissioners.
Good evening.
The subject property is currently zoned R3, single-family residence, and was rezoned from R8 residential agricultural to R2, uh, which is also single-family residence on sewer on June seventh, two thousand and five, with twenty-eight conditions. When the Unified Land Development Code was adopted on September fifteenth, two thousand and nine, the subject property and other properties that were zoned R2 on sewer that met the minimum development standards for R3 zoning, for the R3 zoning district, were converted to R3. The future land use map adopted in two thousand and nine designates the subject property as low-density residential, having one to two dwelling units per acre. The applicant is proposing approximately two hundred dwelling units on one hundred and thirty-one point four gross acres that will incorporate open space as well. The corresponding gross density is one point five two density units per acre. However, the net density will be required to be at or below two dwelling units per acre according to the density unit per acre range for the future land use designation of the subject property. On March twenty-third of two thousand and seventeen, staff recommended to the zoning advisory board approval with twenty-nine conditions, many of which transferred from the June seventh, two thousand and five rezoning. And the zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners tonight approval with twenty-six conditions, and I'll place those on the overhead and be happy to answer your questions.
Okay, um, we would like to, um, any other questions by the board before we call the applicant up? Okay, we now ask the applicant to please come forward for their presentation.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the board for considering this rezoning request. My name is Dale Hall, and I'm with Falcon Design Consultants. And I'm here to represent GOCM Capital UA, US in the rezoning of this property. I wish to thank Mr. Gibbs and his staff for providing assistance through this rezoning process. And I don't wanna go into too much detail in this because the conditions are in front of us, but I wanna do hit a couple highlights on this matter. Overall, the proposal for the rezoning tonight is two units or two lots less than what was originally planned and zoned for this project. So we are asking for two hundred lots in the subdivision. We are also proposing two thousand two hundred square-foot minimum house sizes that would be all brick or stone with ability for some accent areas to be other materials. And we are increasing the open space for all the subdivision residents managed by a mandatory homeowners' association. Overall, my client agrees with the zoning conditions that were brought forth by the zoning advisory board. There are twenty-six of them, but we need some clarification on just four of those items. And if you may, I'd like to go on to those four items right now. Items number four and five deal with street trees. Item number four says, i- in summary, tree, street trees that are in the right-of-way shall be planted and maintained within the islands. The question is that term "maintained." And then number five, it's saying if street trees can't fit in the right-of-way for utility purposes or other reason, they should be planted and maintained outside the right-of-way on the private property. We believe that the word "maintained" should be stricken from that. We do not think it's appropriate for the developer to be maintaining trees in the right-of-way or on private property owner in perpetuity. So that just seems, might have been an oversight on that. Also, number fifteen, it talks about privacy fencing being maintained by the Mandatory Homeowners' Association. Again, our client is fine with the Mandatory Homeowners' Association. I think there's just a, a, a term that should be put in there that says, "All privacy fencing on open space areas." Because if an individual on a house or a lot wants to put up some privacy fencing, this condition, as it's termed, might infer that the homeowners' association is taking private fencing, and, and we, we didn't think that was appropriate also. And last but not least, item number twenty-five, I believe the intent of that condition was to ensure that the developer left eighty foot or was able to donate eighty foot of right-of-way for potential realignment of Clark Drive in future development of that road area. And our client's fine on that. We just think the word or the verbiage as it's written right now is restrictive, and the actual layout and design has been adjusted to allow for Clark Drive to be moved and adjusted to allow for site distances and curves on that. And we believe, as it's written right now, it might be a little restrictive. So all in all, again, my client is in support of all twenty-six conditions with those modifications or clarifications, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any comments or questions, especially regarding those modifications that were just mentioned? Yes, Commissioner Prince?
Hey, Dale. How you doing? Um, question number twenty-six, no building permits shall be issued until sewer services are available at the proposed site. Where's the sewer at now?
Uh, sewer's coming from the northwest, from the surrounding, uh, the county. We have reached out to them, and we're in the process of getting paperwork for that approval to bring it. The, the, it's already there, it's already available at the site, just the proper paperwork to make it, uh, to, to open up and make it legitimate is what we're waiting on.
Clayton County?
Uh, it's coming from DeKalb.
DeKalb?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it is there, manhole's there. Second thing, just as a point of interest, number ten, two-car side-entry garage shall be standard where feasible. What's the lot width of these?
These are seventy-five-foot lot widths. Minimum. Some are larger than that, obviously, but that's where the only minimum size.
In your experience, can you get a side-entry garage? In your experience, can you get a side-entry garage on a 75-foot wide lot?
That's what we're trying to do. It's our intent to do that on all the lots that is feasible. With grading and whatnot, we might not be able to. We haven't done the grading of all this. Now, part of the site is already graded, and there's some roads I've already put in. And some of it is partially graded. Until we actually start doing the building designs, it's kind of hard to see exactly which ones we can and can't. But it is the intent of the developer to put in as many as possible.
I'm unaware, you know, do this too. 75 feet, I just don't know how you get a side-entry garage in there at all.
It'll depend on the product that they're finally going to pick.
You did say intent as well. I made a note of that.
And Dale, do you have a copy of maybe some of the product that they're talking about?
I do not have any product right now. Since this is the developer stage, they have not reached out to the actual builders on this. It's all depending on the rezoning of this, obviously. The actual builder that we'll use is all dependent on the zoning and lot sizes.
Okay. Commissioner Clemmons?
Thank you, Dale. Have you guys met with the community in reference to this?
There was a meeting that was arranged with the community prior to the zoning board. And we attended that meeting on the request of the county. And we met with them and had this information available to them, the individuals that were invited and came. There weren't any other additional meetings that I'm aware of.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. Other questions?
Just a slide of questions, Chair.
Okay.
And this is for Dante. What triggers two entrances?
Fifty lots or more.
So on this, this is two different pieces? Is that what I'm seeing here, two? You've got a west and a east piece? And then would each piece have to have two entrances?
This updated site plan or conceptual plan was provided, I want to say yesterday, to the Planning and Zoning Department. And it's a little hard to see, but there are two designated entrances there. Dale, could you point to those?
So it's not considered two individual pieces of property? It's considered two, one piece of property with two entrances coming off of two different areas?
It's the code reads in Chapter 8 that there has to be two entrances or two points of access.
Yes, okay. Can you point out where those two entrances are? We're in there, one, okay? Two.
Now, where's that first one you pointed out with? I can't, I can't read that. Bond? That Bond Road? I'm looking at that right now. Just one moment, please.
I will take a closer look. It's hard for me to see that as well.
That is Bond Road to the west. We have an access, if I may. There is an access, there's a road that goes off of Bond Road to the west portion of the property. And then there is also a 20-foot emergency access easement between lots 47 and 48 that would go onto Clark Drive. Then to service the west side, or the east side of the development, there is a entrance right off of Clark Drive with an emergency access between just adjacent or south of Lot 72, between Lots 72 and 73, that would be a permanent emergency access easement. So there's actually four access points to this, one to each subdivision, and then the emergency access to maintain safety for the community.
Sure.
Yeah, because it's not showing it on what we see. Okay.
Sure. And I apologize. This came in late yesterday, and I just didn't have time to forward it.
Our apologies also for forwarding added a late note.
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to hear from staff regarding the modifications that were suggested. Any response to those?
Just listening to the presentation by Mr. Hall and their suggestion to remove the words "maintained" from condition number four and number six, and then also adjusting the language in 15 specific to the fencing being, that's on open space, being maintained by the mandatory homeowners association. And then also, condition number 25. At this point, I wouldn't have any objection, but I would caution on condition number 25 and make sure that Henry County DOT verifies the request before we amend it officially. But we can, if it pleases the board.
This Dante, I'm not comfortable with amending any of the conditions. We met with this community, and the community was comfortable with all the conditions. So if we approve this today, it's going to be approved as it stands.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Any other comments? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, and now we will allow a total of 10 minutes for any group that would like to speak for 10 minutes, and then we'll, in opposition, and then we'll allow 10 minutes for those that may want to speak in favor. So at this time, we'll allow those that want to speak in opposition. Good evening.
My name is Joanie Petty, and I live on Clark Drive. On behalf of the residents, we're not in total opposition, but our biggest concern is infrastructure. Clark is a very, it's in bad condition already. It's a very curvy road with rock on the side, and we're already fighting with co-park, with people coming through there with trucks and people having to run off the road to keep from being run over by a truck. Our biggest concern, we want to make sure that there's going to be another exit to this because you're talking 120 homes, you're talking another 200 cars on a two-lane road. We won't be able to get out of our homes, out of our driveways. So we need to know, make sure that they're going to be, there's going to be, besides Clark Drive, is there going to be another exit to the back of the subdivision? But we, you know, right now, the infrastructure just can't handle that. And that's our concern. So I don't know what else we need to do to make that clear, but that's our concern.
Okay. Thank you.
We were satisfied with the updates and changes that they brought to us, but that is our biggest concern. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Ladies and gentlemen, that is the product of a privacy fence six years ago. If you call that a privacy fence, you must be mentally retarded. Because wood today has no substance in it. And these privacy fences, after about two years, they start deteriorating immediately. And that's what you got. Now, those were six years ago, going to four of our county schools, four. Our children passed by that every day. This week, the county was out there propping them back up against the post because they're out in the right-of-way. Anybody that puts that up needs to check himself into a psychiatric ward. Because you're, all we got is an eyesore for our children. How do you expect your children to grow up when they look at that crap every day of their life going to school? And I can show you that all over the county. You know, about 12 years ago, all of our schools had trailers wrapped around them. Well, we fixing to have the same thing. If we don't slow these houses down, and if we start building two and three houses per acre, we're going to have the same thing again. You can't build schools that fast. We're headed down the same road. If a developer, and if I got 300 acres of land, and this ain't against you, sir, but if I'm going to build a school, I need that developer to come to the table. Now, I'm building one in North Augusta, South Carolina. I'm doing it. When we built our school on Walker Road, didn't, did nobody give me the land? I had to buy it. We need to stop that, and we need to have some help on the school system. I am a taxpayer. I think we've had enough of this all-gimme and all-take and no-gimme. So.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
The infrastructure cannot take it. You know it, and I know it. When you got two hours for the police to come to your house on a robbery or a break-in, you're in trouble already. The north end of the county is sucking up all the police anyway. This is 200 houses on 130 acres. It'd take, this is ludicrous. I mean, they would put 300 houses on there if they could. All they want to do is build houses. How long does the public knows when they put in a swimming pool or a clubhouse or anything like that? They end up charging about $100 tax on it. They don't pay any tax on it. Come out to anything. I mean, I just found out about it not too long ago. But it's crazy. I'm asking you guys to turn this down. The infrastructure can't take it. The public safety can't take it. You know, it's, like I said, two hours for a police call right now is ridiculous. Turn it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
I'll make it quick. If you look at this map here, that section, that section, all of the white sections you see there, that's acreage. That is, as Mr. Tony just told you, that's going to be off the tax rolls. You're going to be, you're going to be putting that out there for the homeowners association to use for whatever purposes for $100. I don't care if it's one acre, 10 acres, or 50 acres. All right? It's taking it off of the tax rolls. You're adding to the infrastructure, taking land off of the tax rolls. Something doesn't sound right. This is not for or against this particular project because I don't know anything about that area. I'm only speaking to the commons areas that they're putting up there. And we need to be paying a bunch better, much better attention to this coming up for other developments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Calling again. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
To explain that this subdivision is already approved with lower standards. So if we don't approve the upgrades, they can move forward with the quality that they were looking at move forward with before.
If you don't mind, I can answer that.
Thank you.
This subdivision went through a rezoning back in 2005 with 28 conditions. So if, even if this rezoning does not go through tonight, they can still develop the property as conditioned from 2005 as an R3 zone subdivision.
And can you let the people know that there'll be more houses? There'll be vinyl siding, and there won't be any beautification or amenities within the subdivision.
Okay. Well, let's continue our public hearing. And I thank you for that clarification as well. All right. Okay. We will now allow a total of 10 minutes for anyone who wanted to speak in favor of this zoning request. Again, calling for anyone that wants to speak in favor. Okay. Well, this concludes our public hearing on this. And now we'll just ask again for Mr. Gibbs to come and represent. Okay. Any other further comments or questions by the board or staff?
Madam Chair, before we move on, I just want to thank Dale, County Manager, and I forgot who else was in that meeting with us. But we actually had a meeting with the subdivision directly, that would be directly impacted by this development. And we put strict, beautiful amenities in place to ensure that the subdivision will upgrade the community, upgrade the area, as well as increase property values for the people in the area. We called for four-side brick on the housing. We added a number of amenities such as a clubhouse to the subdivision. The entryway was beautified, lighting on the entryway, as well as other things. So the, this plan will significantly upgrade it. And I think whatever product comes to this community is going to be significantly better than what was proposed, I think in 2006. Dale, do you want to mention anything else regarding what we agreed to?
No, I think you did a very good job of explaining what we added to this development over what was originally there. And we're also increasing the number of units that are in the overall development. So I think that is another key that needs to be considered in this application.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Clemmons?
Comment. I just want to say that often with this board...
Yes.
I would just like to say, often, this board has to deal with projects that were approved way before we got elected. And I know for me, this has been an issue over and over again. So it's always good when the applicants are coming back and we get to add something on top of it when we can't change it. So for a developer to come in and be willing to increase the aesthetics, the community, the value of the property there is to be committed. I just think the public needs to know, a lot of times we get these projects, this is 2005, 12 years ago, already approved. So I just thank staff for the work that they did to try to put some other stuff in this project.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Holmes, did you have comments earlier? Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Increase or decrease?
It is a decrease in the overall units from 202 to 200, so. And increasing open space to, for the community, for the subdivision.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification as well. Any other questions or comments? All right. Commissioners? Okay. The floor is now open for a motion.
So move with the current conditions that are as they read.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? And I abstain. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners.
Okay. We will now move into the public hearing regarding RZ 1705. No, I'm sorry. I need to go back to RZ, C O M P A M 1703.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The future land use map designates this subject property for both commercial and low-density. If we could get the camera to zoom in a little bit more, the northern portion of the property highlighted in green with the green hash marks is yellow. From time to time, what we find in our review and research is that some of our properties in the county, some of the, or portions of the property may be different with respect to future land use designation and/or zoning. And that's from time to time, not all the time. And with the subject property being designated future land use for commercial and low-density, the applicant is requesting to change the low-density residential land use designation to commercial, making the entire tract uniform with respect to the future land use. There is a concurrent request to rezone 4.2 plus and minus acres from RA Residential Agriculture to C2 general commercial for the purpose of future commercial. The future land use map designates the majority of the subject property and abutting properties to the south and to the west as commercial as indicated on the overhead. And because the applicant has a concurrent request to rezone the entire subject property to general commercial, which is C2, the applicant is requesting that the low-density residential portion of the subject property be changed to commercial to support their rezoning request. Therefore, based upon the character of the area and county policies per our comprehensive plan, Planning and Zoning Staff recommended approval to the zoning advisory board on March 23. And the zoning advisory board recommends approval to the Board of Commissioners this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gibbs? Commissioner Prince?
Dante, would you explain to the board how this single piece of property got two designations on the future land use map, please?
More than likely what happened, in my memory, is what I'm recalling, using right now...
now, and I may not recall accurately, it may have started out as a smaller tract and they incorporated more property, or it may have been two tracts combined into one. But more than likely, it was just some type of geographical information systems error in that the line work did not encompass the entire 4.2 plus and minus acres and may have been adjusted thereafter, but by that time, the future land use map had been adopted. So we had, or ended up with two different land uses for future, for future designations.
Do you see the intent was for it to be commercial there?
Yes. Based on the abutting properties to the south and to the west, the intent of this corridor with respect also to the previous activity center was designated as one of our commercial nodes. But after we adopted our high recorded overlay in March of this year, we dissolved the activity centers and now those properties that abut those designated roads and highways that are within the corridor will be held to those standards. So with respect to this property, in reference to when we reviewed it, we actually reviewed it under a different ordinance, the activity center formerly Chapter 9 in our UODC. Yes, this area was projected to be a commercial node.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. We will now ask the applicant to please come forward as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Andy Welch. I'm representing Buddy Kelly Properties in this request. The comp plan that you have before you, you have a two-step process in your ordinance and that is required to modify the comprehensive plan to reflect the underlying zoning should someone want to amend the comprehensive plan to reflect a commercial zoning classification. As Mr. Gibbs has already reported to you, this corridor, Springdale Road here, has been designated under your comprehensive land use plan for commercial use. The request here is simply to complete the mistake from GIS in terms of the designation of this 4.2 acres that lies at the corner of Springdale Road and East Lake Parkway. And then the backside of it, you may be aware, is an abandoned road, roadway. Part of it goes back into this Wolf Creek Road or Wolf Creek Drive, depending on which map you look at. And the back portion of this road is residential on the backside of it and there are properties that have driveways off of that, what is remaining of that particular drive. The future land use map has designated all those properties on Wolf Creek Drive and Springdale both sides as commercial designations and we have applied to consolidate the entirety of the 4.2 acres into a commercial designation along East Lake Parkway, which as you know is a four-lane road running through the heart of the county. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
All right. Good evening and thank you, Mr. Welch. Any questions from the board? Okay. Well, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing on C O M P A M 1703 and we'll be granted 10 minutes for those that wishing to speak in opposition and likewise, 10 minutes will be granted to anyone wishing to speak in favor of. So at this time, we'll call for anyone that's wishing to speak and there will be a total of 10 minutes for those that do come. Calling again for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Thank you.
My name is Tara Harrison and I actually live on the property that is adjacent to Wolf Creek. The road that, sorry, the Wolf Creek Road, my driveway, my second driveway is on that road. So that 4.2 acres is adjacent to my property. So I'm definitely opposed to this. You know, I'm trying to understand, the stuff in red, was it originally, it's originally zoned as commercial?
The stuff in red, the future land use map, which is what Henry County adopted many years ago, the stuff in red is projected to be commercial in the future.
But we have all the properties on the other side of us and then the two properties on my property and the gentleman that lives behind me off of Wolf Creek?
That is projected in Henry County to be commercial. Yes, ma'am.
The property that is across East Lake, from my understanding and from the last time that I looked at the property map, same people that owns that 4.2 also owns the 59 acres that are across the street on East Lake on the other side. And that's not commercial. That's not what we're looking for. I'm just, you know, I'm a resident, I'm a taxpayer, I enjoy where I live. I don't want to be in a subdivision with 200 homes. A homeowner association, actually, I own two properties in Henry County. Please, 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 I'm begging, do not approve this. I'd like to stay where I'm at and not have to deal with commercial property or the extra traffic, the people, the crime, everything else that comes along with that.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
You're zoning commercial. Is that going from, what, low dense to commercial? What are they planning on putting in there? I mean, is it going to be another shopping center? What's the plan on that? I hadn't heard anything about that.
We'll ask Mr. Gibbs to respond.
The only potential end user that has been communicated, just kind of in general, is a potential convenience store, but that has not been confirmed or vetted or vested with the county through some type of building or sales plans.
So it could be anything?
It could be whatever our C2 zoning permits in our Unified Land Development Code.
Okay. Little unfair to that lady. I live around the corner from it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. We will now allow a total of 10 minutes for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Again, calling for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Okay. Well, again, we will ask the board, are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, this concludes the public hearing and we will now, again, just open the floor for a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the comp amendment.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a second. Any other questions, comments, or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? And I abstain. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Gibbs, we will move to the next public hearing regarding RZ 1705.
Thank you, Chair Wood and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone the same subject property that we just discussed with respect to the future land use map from RA Residential Agriculture to C2 general commercial for the purpose of future commercial. Per your previous motion and approval, the future land use map now designates the subject property completely and wholly as commercial, thereby supporting the applicant's request to rezone it to commercial. Planning and zoning staff recommended approval to the Zone Advisory Board on March 23rd with six conditions and the Zone Advisory Board recommends to the Board of Commissioners approval with nine conditions and I'll place those on the overhead for your viewing. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Again, this is a public hearing and we would now grant a total of 10 minutes for, or actually ask the applicant to come forward. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Andy Welch. I'm requesting the rezoning for you for Buddy Kelly Properties, the 4.2 acres that we've just identified in the previous comp plan amendment. The zoning, the staff has reviewed the application for the C2 designation. The application was originally an application for C3 that has been ratcheted down to C2. And also in, the staff has recommended approval for that designation of C2 for this, for 4.2 acres. In addition, the planning, the Zoning Advisory Board has recommended approval as well by unanimous decision. This is, it should be noted because the applicant has submitted an application with a site plan that is a conceptual site plan. It does show a gas station convenience store on the location. Since we filed the application and about the same time that the ZAB was hearing this matter, this body adopted an amendment to your zoning ordinance to place overlay districts over all the major corridors through Henry County, applying to each and every property that abuts a designated road within that ordinance. As you well know, that ordinance includes East Lake Parkway. So the conditions that had been recommended by both staff as well as the ZAB are now, several of those conditions are now on the board before you, they are in your resolution, but several of them are now embodied in that new ordinance. So what we have tonight, if the chair will allow me to approach, I have the same set of conditions. However, what we have done is eliminated the conditions that are now covered by your overlay ordinance that would apply to this property regardless of the conditions. And so that there's no potential conflict between the language of a condition that was previously drafted before your ordinance was implemented, we'd like to remove those particular conditions but leave the other conditions that would apply. And if I may, I can come forward to present those to you.
She can get them to us as well. Thank you.
And while those are being handed out, members of the board, the, since we do not have an end user, there were several uses that in discussions with staff and others, we concluded that these particular uses should not be, would not be conducive in that area. And so you'll see in your conditions of zoning under item number four of the list that you have before you, and I'll put this up on the overhead, there is a list of uses that would be excluded. In other words, it would not be permitted, commercial uses for this particular property and I'll put that up for the public to see and read them off. I know it's hard to see it, so I'm going to try to read them off. Rental rentals of vehicles and equipment, so you wouldn't have vehicle rental equipment would not be permitted. Gun sales would not be permitted. Pawn shops would not be permitted. Bars or drinking beverage establishments would not be permitted. Portable or mobile restaurants and food services would not be permitted. Services to buildings and other dwellings would not be permitted. Industrialized and modular buildings would not be permitted. A daycare or nursery center would not be permitted. Taxi office, children and youth centers, kennels, and overnight tractor-trailer parking would all be excluded from the use. And then I think most significantly is that the last condition, number five, which was placed by the Zoning Advisory Board, which was to address the concerns of those that live and drive off of Wolf Creek Road, requires that there be a minimum 40-foot undisturbed buffer. If you've been to the property, you know that that is a heavily wooded tract currently. And it has been the practice of the county to preserve those wooded areas because when you clear-cut them down and then you have to go back and reestablish them, you really have opened it up to the view shed and you've kind of worked against what the buffering is intended to do, which is to screen off the view. So by, by the condition that you have under number five in the list that I just gave you, you'll see that there would be a 40-foot buffer along the property boundary where it abuts the roadway of Wolf Creek Drive and it shall be preserved in its natural state, which I think is, makes it very clear that it's to remain as it is, that 40-foot buffer. And then also, but it does say that it must be replanted where it's disturbed. So there are times when utilities have to be put in place or if there's a fencing requirement placed in there, there may be some disturbance, but it would have to be obviously replanted if it was disturbed. This language is there intended to protect the property owners, the residential properties behind this, even though their properties are designated for future commercial use, the zoning of those properties are such that they're residential in nature and your ordinance requires that we have those 40-foot buffers, even though there's an entire road width that also exists between those properties and the subject property. So you'd have the road width that exists for Wolf Creek Drive plus the 40-foot buffer before you would even get into any of the developed area of the 4.2 acres for commercial. Again, we believe this request is consistent with your future land use map. It is consistent with the contemplated uses going forward. It probably is worth revisiting the corridor of Springdale as to whether or not that should be commercial going forward or not. That is a, that, it's a two-lane road right there, but East Lake Road itself is a four-lane road divided highway that runs through Henry County with that, with a traffic light at that particular intersection. We would ask that you approve the request. We would ask that you approve it with the five conditions that we've submitted to you. If you wish to have the same conditions that have been imposed, that's fine too because the same excluded uses are listed under your resolution that you have before you. I would note, however, that the 40-foot buffer, as it's written in the resolution, could be read to mean a 40-foot buffer all around the property itself on every roadway, which would effectively screen out the use in all directions. And we would not agree to that condition as written, which is, I think, condition number nine under your resolution. Those are the comments we have in terms of our application and I'm happy to take any questions from members of the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Welch. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Well, thank you. This is a public hearing regarding RZ 1705 and there would be a total of 10 minutes given to anyone wishing to speak, again, over a 10-minute period. In opposition and likewise, there will be 10 minutes granted, a total for those wishing to speak in favor. We were now called for anyone who's wishing to speak in opposition. Calling again, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? We will now open the floor for anyone wishing to speak in favor. And calling for anyone wishing to speak in favor. So therefore, this public hearing is now concluded. We will now, again, any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions? Commissioner Prince?
Asking for Mr. Welch.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Welch, the concern I have is, and I've get complaints from places where we put in a commercial, you know, building around residential, 24-hour access, open 24 hours, things of this nature. And I know I can't condition that, I can't limit that, but, you know, I'm just very concerned with that. And I don't, in our overlay, we do have something to address, lighting.
Yes, we do. Lighting, signage, landscaping.
Because I don't want the neighbors to be affected by the lights. It's there.
I think the new overlay district now actually requires.
Downcast.
The downcast LED lighting, I believe, which has a smaller halo effect than your traditional incandescent light bulbs or your fluorescent light bulbs. They're more expensive and, but there is also energy savings on the other side of it. But the, the, the better part of it is it reduces the lumens that spread off of the property.
Sure. Okay. And I just have some comments to my constituents, just for a second, if you don't mind. You know, when we make decisions about where commercial areas are going, we have to look at what could come to the area, what could come to the property. And, you know, very familiar with the site, I remember fishing off Springdale Road when it was a dirt road off the wooden bridge, very familiar with the area. When we have an area that's actually built out with a four-lane parkway. When we have an area that's actually built out with a four-lane parkway on a red light, it's assumed that that area is going to go commercial. And I understand residents living around there, and I feel for them, I really do. But East Lake Parkway is a commercial corridor now, and it was put in to be such. That being said, do any of the other commissioners have any comments or questions, Tom?
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Board now for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval. And Mr. Welch, you got ahead of me. I went through all the conditions, and I marked mine up exactly like yours. So we had eliminated all the conditions as they were from staff because of the overlay district that we have now. Can we just enter this as an exhibit, or do I need to read these?
If you will read it into the record, so that when we rewrite or amend the resolution, we can reference it.
Mr. Welch, would you read these into the record, please?
Yes, sir, I will read them into the record. Conditions, the heading here is conditions for RZ 1705. Buddy Kelly Properties, 4.2 plus or minus acres at East Lake Parkway and Springdale Drive. Condition number one, a traffic impact study, parentheses, TIS, in parentheses, shall be completed if required by the ULDC. The developer shall be required to provide improvements based upon the findings of the TIS meeting the approval of the HCDOT. Depending on the traffic distribution and generation rates, developer may be required to widen Springdale Road for the placement of a left-hand, left-turn lane providing access to the subject property. Number two, there shall be no median breaks along East Lake Parkway. Number three, should existing access points be relocated, each access point shall have a deceleration lane slash acceleration taper. The revised access points shall meet minimum spacing requirement per ULDC and shall meet minimum intersection site distance requirements per the posted speed limit. Number four, the following uses shall be excluded. Rental of vehicles and equipment, gun sales, pawn shops, bar or drinking alcoholic beverage establishment, portable or mobile restaurants and food services, services to buildings and dwellings, industrialized and modular buildings, daycare or nursery center, taxi office, children and youth centers, kennels, overnight tractor-trailer parking. Number five, a 40, the number 40-foot buffer along the property boundary where it abuts the roadway of Wolf Creek Drive shall be preserved in its natural state or replanted where disturbed.
All right.
Conditions.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions, comments, or discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? And I have to stay. Thank you. All right, our item 15 was moved earlier up on the agenda, so now we'll move into our public comment section. And during this time, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, and et cetera that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting, and you must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Each person who addresses this board shall not make personal impertinent slanderous or profane remarks to any member of this board, staff, or general public. Any person who makes such remarks or utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of this board meeting shall at the discretion of the chair or the majority of the board be barred from further audience participation before the board during this meeting. So we now will begin with our first public comment, and we'll invite up Mr. Beal Tony to speak about the state of the county and the water authority.
Well, I didn't pay to hear your state of the county, Mr. Wood, so I'll have to say right now, from what I can see as far as public safety, we're in pretty poor shape. The mills, the two mills going to the water authority, again, one should be, one should go back to the people. Two... And you're going to hear about it, and you're going to hear about it till we can get a referendum to where we can do away with these two mills. Anything that has been put into effect can be turned around. I don't know where Patrick gets all his information, but, you know, whatever, there's nothing that can't be undone. You know, y'all have all done a great job of making people that come here every meeting and is concerned about this county, trying to make us feel like third-class citizens. And you've done a great job of it. You've moved us to the back of, back of the meeting, so we have to sit here. All these other folks, all these proclamations and high-fives and all that stuff, they get... I just want to show you this. Everything is at the front of the meeting. Why did you move public comments to the back of the meeting? What you did it for was to deter people from coming and staying. You know, you think it's, you know, we probably have crazy to do this, but you're not going to run me off, I promise you. Only the Lord Jesus Christ is going to take me out of here. I'll be here as long as y'all are. Mr. Barham, you're my, you're my commissioner, like it or not. You're, you know, you've made a lot of decisions that I disagree with. Putting 300 apartments, almost 300 apartments in, I disagree with that. Voting on a lot of things, whatever I would vote probably against, you would vote for. I don't think me and you have hit on one at all. I called you, you didn't return my call. You say you did, I don't have anything on my phone. I'm sorry. You know, you have a lot of problems here. You've got a lot of opinions, you've got a lot of people that are smart people. All you got to do is just listen a little bit. Don't try to make, don't try to make these people feel, you know, like they're third-class citizens. Let me tell you this again, Ms. Wood. If Martin Luther King was standing here today, I promise you, you wouldn't stop him either. He's going to speak up, and he would be there. He's going to stand for the people, and I'm going to stand for the people. Regardless of what y'all do to us, you can put us, you can cut us down to two minutes. You know, I've asked for a continuance sometimes. Mr. Blake did it one time. You would never do it. You made motions tonight, your second motions tonight. You could do it. Dee Clemmons, I'm disappointed in you. Last meeting, you took off, you didn't even want to be involved with it. Last of all, Ms. Clemmons, there's been some ethics complaints filed against you. I think you ought to see to them.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Okay. Still, I'm going to stand here.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. You're welcome.
I'm going to take my little 45 seconds. Y'all, y'all don't want to give me anything? I'll stand here. I'll talk to you. Again, y'all know how to make people feel like third-class citizens. I know what it feels like to be at the back of the bus. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Okay. Our next public comment will come from Mr. Nicholas Day regarding insurance for over 65 retirees.
Yes, my name's Nicholas Day. I commented earlier. I want to thank Mr. Bruce Holmes for listening, because I will have an out pay. I will not pay more premiums, but I will pay 20% of, Medicare pays 80, and I'll have to pay 20 under the Medicare plan. So if I go anywhere, which I asked a question, operational, whatever, I got to pay 20%. If I go to the doctor, I got to pay a copay. We didn't pay that. But 10 and a half years, y'all have had insurance that has actually taken care of that 20%. And as of this year, we're thrown under the bus. And, you know, being older citizens, you know, most of us have got a little pension from the county, then other, we own social security. When you talk about $800 or $900 for a CAT scan or something like that, that's a pretty good expense. It's even a good expense to your employees that are currently employed and have the 80-20 plan, but at least they get a paycheck every week. We only get one once a month. But I do appreciate Mr. Bruce Holmes listening, because it will be money out of my pocket. And you'll be hearing more from the retired employees, because the longer this starts and as soon as they start seeking services, they're going to find out, wow, we got to spend money out of our pocket now, whereas in the past, like I said, I paid zero, because you did have good insurance. You know, Blue Cross Blue Shield took up that other 20. You got to realize, I paid just as much as a county employee does, and the insurance company, Blue Cross Blue Shield, would never, ever pay over 20%. You know, and a county employee, they have to pay 80. So I don't see the logic of why we should be penalized, because we're 65 years old and retired and not working for the county. So I really thank you, and I thank you, Mr. Bruce Holmes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Day. Our next comment comes from Mr. John Redfern, and he wants to speak on insurance. He's requesting 15 minutes. I do ask the board, is there a motion to extend beyond the five minutes? Calling again, is there a motion to extend beyond the five minutes? Okay, the request for 15 minutes is denied, and Mr. Redfern, you have five minutes.
All righty, and I'll talk as quickly as I can. I'll give you one minute in a condensation of my background, so understand what I'm talking about with insurance. Back during the Atlanta Olympics in 1976, I was working for the good Dr. Charlie Hollis, who was the CEO and founding physician of MAG Mutual, MAG being the Medical Association of Georgia Mutual, which is the southeast's largest medical malpractice carrier in downtown Atlanta, and I was running the financial services business group. Charlie called me and asked me to build the Associational Health Insurance Program for the Medical Association. So Charlie asked me to stand it up in 65 days, because he was Georgia's delegate to the American Medical Association, and the AMA asked Georgia to stand up and run this health insurance program that Georgia and the American Medical Association want to take a look at. So I built this program for Charlie and the Medical Association of Georgia. We met the deadline of having it done in 65 days, and we stood this up for all 8,000 Georgia physicians and their office staff and their employees. And building this thing and putting it up, we had some unique, very innovative programs. We built it with high deductible health insurance plans and this new securities vehicle called an MSA, or a medical savings account, which, as you know now, has morphed into HSAs or healthcare savings accounts. We built it, we fought it through from scratch in its inception, and I started butting my head against this, this sales issue of fighting this behemoth in Georgia called Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia, who was my biggest competitor. And I fought them for a couple of years. I fought their highly-developed network and complained to my business partner, who at that time was Unicare. Their parent company was Blue Cross of California, the largest blue on the planet, and I complained vociferously about our network, particularly in South Georgia. I complained pretty good, because I persuaded my business partner to put an end to it, so we solved the problem. I bought Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia. We purchased them lock, stock, and barrel, and I walked into their office, my offices were downtown on Piedmont Street. We went down one day after lunch and walked into their offices after you read about it in the Atlanta Journal that Blue Cross Blue Shield of Georgia had been purchased. I drove that sale. We walked into their underwriters and their executive staff and told them how they're fixing to do business to serve my health insurance program. So, having set the stage like that, let's talk about a couple of things. I sat in the conference room and observed two budget cycles now in your all's conference room, where you all were subjected to a budget-busting fait accompli about your health insurance. I thought this time that you guys were going to open the process up to some cost savings via competitive bidding, and I was very disappointed that you did not. I invite your attention, your clerk very kindly, hopefully, has distributed my packets to you, so hopefully each of you has been distributed these packets to share with you what I've been doing with your staff for the past five weeks. I spent about an hour and a half with your county manager, your HR director, your finance director, and your insurance director. All five of us met for about an hour and a half about five weeks ago. I do want to point one thing out to you very quickly. When you buy health insurance, you lock in the price or the premium for a year, however, you make payments month to month. So if you are unhappy with your health insurance, you just don't make the payment that next month. You acquire different health insurance. So what's locked in for a year is your term, your premium payments. But if you're unhappy after, you make your payments month to month, this is not cast in stone. So if you want to change, you are not locked in for a year, and I want to make that plain. In my opinion, in my professional opinion, you had an inadequate market survey and quoting process. You have about four major carriers out there in the large group market, and the two biggest were Blue Cross Blue Shield and United Healthcare. And I invite your attention to page 12 of 14.
I'm sorry, Mr. Redfern, we're now out of the five minutes, but thank you, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
On page 12, you've got a statement from United Healthcare.
Mr. Redfern, we've granted the five minutes, and we are now moved to our next public comments, so we thank you for your comments.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
We'd love to save you some money.
Thank you.
Have a read. That's what we've been doing.
Thank you. We will now invite up Mr. Clayton Cartt, who would like to speak on transportation and T-SPLS.
Mrs. Stephanie, could you please distribute these copies to the board? Board of Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Clayton Cartt. I'm a resident of District 1, Locust Grove. I want to start tonight with a quote coming from the Gwinnett, from the Gwinnett Daily News regarding the GDOT Commissioner Russell McMarry. It reads, "Gwinnett County always comes to the table with a handout to help, not looking for a handout." That's very key. I can't emphasize that enough. I know there is a lot of talk from citizens regarding that the state should fund all major projects, and I want to let the citizens know about which projects the state is currently funding and how the county can do its part to further that GDOT relationship. This is a list of five major road widens currently in progress by the Georgia Department of Transportation that total over $265 million, and all of that funding will be, is between the year 2016 and 2023. The state of Georgia is doing its part to help Henry County traffic, and we, the citizens, can do our part by enacting the transportation sales tax, or T-SPLS. This would be an additional 1% to go towards Henry County road projects. It is my estimation, based on current SPLS revenues, that we could generate an additional $165 million if it was enacted now, and that would be between the years 2018 and 2023. Now let's talk about some of the highlights that I think we could accomplish through the T-SPLS. The Rock Quarry Road widening and State Route 81 widening are two major projects that citizens fre... and State Route 81 Widening are two major projects that citizens frequently express concern about looking to have finished. Current projections have those projects finished around the year 2030. I think with a T-Sploß, we could fund those projects in full and have them completed within the next five to six years by funding them in full through the T-Sploß. In addition, we can increase in our investment in intersections and sidewalks. Intersections can improve the flow of a road as much of a widening and only cost about $1 million to $1.5 million per intersection. $25 million per intersection could go a long way into our intersection network. In additional, I know it was a concern of one of the budget hearings about sidewalks and pedestrian hearing within the county. It is within the 2040 comprehensive plan to spend $5 million per year on sidewalks. I think that is a very wise investment the county could make, and I have included that in my T-Sploß. Additionally, we could, we've spent a lot of time in the last several board meetings discussing the Atlanta Regional Commission Transportation Improvement Program and our 2017 project solicitations. In that was the preliminary engineering and right-of-way acquisition for the East Atlanta Road Connector, including Patrick Henry Parkway and the Jodyco Road Widening by the Jodyco Atlanta South Development west of the interstate. I believe in a T-Sploß, we could go ahead and fund those projects in full and not have to be dependent on the prospect of federal funding to move those forward. In addition, we can improve our interstate access. The diverging diamond interchange has been proposed by GDOT for Exit 218, State Route 2081. However, unfortunately, there is no state funding allocated for the construction of that project. Diverging diamond interchanges have been successfully implemented all along the north side of Atlanta, and I think would be a great improvement to the Exit 218 interchange for traffic flow. In addition, I have included a $10 million contribution to our growing efforts to add a new interchange at Bethlehem Bottoms Road. I have a website that's moving Henry forward and a Facebook page where all of this is detailed and more information. What was given to you tonight is the full project list I have proposed. Of course, that is the proposal of one citizen that would be vetted fully by staff and by a committee if we went to an actual T-Sploß. Just the proposal, I think, of one citizen as we work to shorten our transportation shortfall of over $2 billion and help alleviate traffic congestion in Henry County. Again, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cartt. Okay, our next public comment will come from Mr. Larry Maury of Ethics and Government to speak on government.
On the insurance that was Mr. Redfern was just talking about. Sir, I'm about to hit it. I want to read you something. Good morning, John. I wanted to write to inform you that we presently have not worked on or even received a medical RFP for Henry County. Please be advised, if you'd like to work with us, we would really like to work with you. Mark Bailey, United Healthcare. So Mr. Gasses has not contacted United Healthcare, nor has he received or asked for or instituted any contact with United Healthcare. So he's not bid it off your insurance like we were told. And Sherry, there's a lot of emails from John's account that covered a lot of things y'all talked about. I think you need to go back and check on that. Now, Ms. Woods, I have, and I'm gonna put this on our website so the world can see it. Because you say that, in addition to serving on the ARC's Board Transportation and Air Quality Committee, I was appointed to the Governor's Committee and joined the Transit Committee. Well, I've got three pages here of comments from your email on the 30th and 31st of March, and I'm gonna have plenty more, where you are pushing a terminal for trucks in this county. You told me last week you hadn't. Here it is, right here, for the world to see. And you know, what's so bad about it? You are actively trying to include your other commissioners in this process. Dee, I do want to comment twice. You says, "We have to say no trucks and stop this study." Twice you said that. I want to compliment you on that. Thank you. Blake, you and your buddy up there in Stockbridge, from what I'm told by Ms., she's thanking y'all for helping to locate a truck terminal site up in Eagle's Landing, Stockbridge area. So I thought that was kind of interesting. So I want all the voters of Henry County to know that there's fixing to be a train terminal between McDonough and Locust Grove. And y'all know it. You're not gonna hide it anymore. Norfolk Southern is gonna build the largest rail yard south of Atlanta, right here in our backyard, with double deckers coming in from the port. And you guys are trying to locate a truck terminal in Henry County, in the heart of Henry County. And you know about it. You've been knowing about it. And Andy Welch said right here, he's been championing it from the state, from the governor himself. He's sitting over here talking about nature and having a filter system and illumination of lights, and he's wanting to put a truck terminal in the middle of this county. And y'all are like a bunch of, well, I ain't gonna say that. We're gonna put all this on the webpage for all of all the people to see. So you won't be telling one thing and doing another. Bruce, I want to say one thing to you. You ought to be ashamed of yourself for taking that thing that happened up in your park and totally misstating what was said on that TV and what really happened. And we got the proof of that. We're gonna put on the web, too. You know, a lady told me one day, she said, "Larry, you're just so hostile." I'm not hostile. I ain't hit nobody. I ain't cursed nobody. I'd hug y'all's neck and kiss you if I thought it helped. But y'all don't listen. This afternoon, two lanes coming off of 216 on the unloading end of I-75, it was backed up out into the highway, the four-lane highway of 75. One day this week, intersection 216 was blocked up all the way past Locust Grove Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Maury.
Going to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Your five minutes have concluded. Thank you, sir.
I would appreciate you do one thing to me, ma'am. I appreciate you not lying to me.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Your time is up. We will now invite up-
Of all people, you should tell the truth.
We should invite up our next citizen for public comment, and that is Mr. Carl Swenson.
Hello again. Okay, I gotta say, Mr. Holmes, bless your heart. You did the right thing here today. Kind of surprised me. You voted against this budget. I am very, very happy that you did that. And you also were looking out after the retirees. I'm very happy to see that, too. Now, Larry has already talked about the little fiasco with ABC. I was gonna go into that in depth, but I'm not going to at this point. But I do want to remind you of something, Mr. Holmes. When we talked up at the Urgent Care Center, and by the way, that's a great little project. Good job. We talked about the young man who got hit up there. And you told me that he was chased out there by dogs. Okay, that's not factually correct. He was chased out there by two other teenagers, all three of which who had just exited the park, and all three of which were heading south on the sidewalk. But beyond that, back in 2014, whenever this whole park idea was going, and Mr. Barham, I believe you had said it was gonna be nothing more than a hose in an acre of land, okay? That's a little simplification, great. But you had another, you had another good idea. You did. The Bellamy Memorial Park, which is what was contracted to be completed, included, of all things, the police precinct, the Northern Police Precinct. So you had a twofer. You got your park, and you got your police precinct. But then you canceled that contract. And now we're $2 million into the $4 million that was our police precinct, and you're going after the other two. Something is really, really, really wrong with this picture. But somebody that I interviewed when I was doing my video had a good suggestion. If you want to protect the kids, put the police precinct there at the park. You've got a building for it, and you won't have to pay anybody any more money for the land. Actually, that person had a great idea. And I think you should visit that or revisit that. Think about it if you would. Now, we had a gentleman here who's talking about T-Sploß. I don't know if you guys remember. I do. A whole bunch of tea partiers went all the way around 285 a couple of times, honking their horns with signs and everything. And that T-Sploß initiative was crushed. But just like herpes, here it is again. Folks, we're tired of being overtaxed. I showed you my empty pockets. I'm not the only one with empty pockets, folks. And you apparently don't seem to find a tax that you don't like. You like them all. This is scary stuff. And the Atlanta Regional Commission, June. I told this to Tommy, and he stopped it. That is a seditious act, a treasonous act, because you're taking home rule away from Henry County and giving an unelected board up there in Atlanta control over our county. You're abdicating that. That's not leadership. That's not leadership at all. You're following, you're following the state crowd. That's nothing to be proud of. So, folks, you've already approved this budget. And now you're gonna, you know, increase the mileage rate. People are gonna have to pay more taxes, and new notices are gonna go out, and everybody's gonna be duly upset because here we go again. More money. T-Sploß, regular Sploß. Why don't you have an E-Sploß for extras, just extras? That way, another penny? No, what's another penny, right? Then you can have all the stuff you want. Do it. Do an E-Sploß. Have a great day.
Thank you. Well, this concludes our public comment section. We will now move into the approval of the minutes for the May 2nd regular Board of Commissioners meeting and also the call workshop meeting on May the 2nd. And then there was a May 4th call BLC meeting regarding the budget slash public hearing. Floor is now open for a motion for approval of the minutes.
Shall move.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we will now just allow any comments from the chair or commissioners at this time. Commissioner Holmes?
As a matter of fact, I want to thank Clayton for his comments. I think everyone in this county knows that we're in dire need of improving our road infrastructure. So I think, so I'm asking the board if we could seriously consider moving forward with the T-Sploß. We have a number of subdivisions where the roads are in disrepair. We have intersections that need to be improved. We have a number of roads that need to be widened. The T-Sploß would help us incorporate trails throughout the county to improve the quality of life for our citizens. And I think that we should let the citizens of Henry County decide what they want to do with the roads in this particular county. Shouldn't be left up to us. Give the citizens an opportunity to decide if they want to improve this county, the road infrastructures, the widening of roads, walking trails, sidewalks, things of that nature. So I want to thank you, Clayton, for your comments. Ask you to state a drill because this is something that's very important. As I talk to citizens throughout the county, they're all telling me, especially the citizens that live in subdivisions. We have subdivisions in this county that have never been repaved. You drive into some of these subdivisions, you're driving in potholes. The T-Sploß would help us alleviate those situations. So I want to put it to the board to see if the board would support allowing the citizens to move forward this November and vote on improving our road infrastructure in Henry County. And I want to open it up for anybody who wants to have dialogue.
Okay. Let's see, Commissioner Prince, is this related to Commissioner Holmes' comment?
Yeah, I just want to say to Clayton as well, I will continue to advocate for the strong political involvement of young people in this community. I know that you live in District One, but I see you all over the place. And when we, as a board and a community, talk about millennials and the generation Y in our community, we got to think about people like you that are eager to work in this community, eager to do things in this community. And the work that you put in here is excellent work. I see that you studied, you did your research, you did your homework. And I couldn't let this opportunity go by without commending you for the work that you've done and that we will listen to the young people in this community. And thank you so much. I know you're away in school, you come home, and you love Henry County. We thank you for that. And I want more of the citizens in District Two that'd like you to come out as well. Thank you for your service. I know you're a great Eagle Scout. Thank you for your service.
Other comments?
I'd like to say also, we thank you for coming and making those positive comments tonight.
Other comment?
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Clayton.
Other comment?
And I have one, Commissioner. I just want to remind us that the county has just completed a joint county cities comprehensive transportation improvement plan. And again, it called for a $3 billion funding requirement to meet the needs of what we're hearing as a major outcry throughout this county. And I will say that also, it has been proven in that study that there is a $2 billion gap. So we, as a county, do need to be thinking about how do we help address our infrastructure? Because we are still along two-lane roads along major corridors, and we even have unpaved roads. And yes, we do need to begin thinking more about the safety and the health with sidewalks of our citizens. So again, these are my comments. I just wanted to make that statement as well, as it relates to our transportation needs. Commissioner Prince?
Thank you. Just for the citizens, Commissioner Clemmons and I are gonna be having a joint town hall here in the next few weeks. And some of the conversation will be transportation. So I'd like to invite you to come out and talk to us about, you know, if you see T-Sploß as a solution, or if you don't. I'd love to hear from the people because, you know, we work for you. So it's really your decision. So please come out. It'll be in the next few weeks. We'll have it posted up on the site. And just come out and tell us how you feel. Thank you.
Okay, other, let's see, I've got Commissioner Clemmons, Commissioner Holmes, and more-
I just want to also be clear that T-Sploß is not something, I know our chair said, "We as a county decide," and I agree. Well, that "we as a county" doesn't mean this board up here decides. When T-Sploß is approved or not approved, it's up to the citizens. That just means that we simply says that it's not our decision to make. It goes on the ballot, and the people decide. And I think the right to vote should continue to be the right of the people. And all we can do is to say, give them that right, to have a discussion about whether we should or shouldn't, we'll come out and vote.
Well, thank you for that clarification as well on my behalf, too. Commissioner Holmes?
So with that said, I want to make a motion that we ask Patrick to further look at bringing a resolution for us to vote on to put a T-Sploß referendum on the agenda this November. So I'm gonna make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Further comments or questions?
Well, before we put it on the ballot, I think we got a-
Well, before we put it on the ballot, I think we've got to have some public hearings, and we've got to get all the cities involved in this, and there's some planning. We need to allow staff some time to put a plan together on what we're going to do and that sort of thing. So, I would like to see staff move forward swiftly with putting a plan together that we can look at and see if we can get the support of other cities.
All right, Commissioner Holmes, and your response to that?
All I want to say is sometimes you have to lead, and if we look at other counties, including Spalding, counties like that, their infrastructure is in better shape than our infrastructure. So, we've missed out over the years on funding opportunities, and it's time for us to do the right thing for the citizens and let the citizens make the decision on how they want their county to look in the future. So, we have, we, I don't want to do your job, Chair, but we, you know, we have a motion, we have a second, so I think...
Yeah, we had a motion and a second, but we were also opening it up for comments, and we've heard from one commissioner. I want to continue that process. So, any other comments from any other commissioners?
I'm not saying no, Commissioner Holmes.
I just don't like last-minute add-ons without time to absorb it.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table, and we've got a second. Any other comments or questions?
I feel like I can support this at a later time, but not tonight. I got to see the overall plan.
Okay, other comments or questions?
I think we're in the right direction, but I'm going to agree with the other two that we need to look at the overall plan as well. I think we are headed in the right direction, though.
And I think that the motion is to have Patrick to put something together for us to look at, not to say tonight we're voting on T-Sploß.
What was it?
Yeah, we need to clarify that.
There would be a process involved. I wouldn't be bringing you a resolution at the next meeting to vote to put it on the agenda. The T-Sploß law requires us to engage in a number of steps, and I think Commissioner Barham's correct. Before we do that, we have to have information to provide to you. So, perhaps what, what myself and management staff can do is start assembling that information and assembling a little bit of almost educational material to bring to you so you know exactly what the process is going to look like, what the projections would be before you vote on the resolution, because you need to know those things, and we also need to educate you and the public on what that process would be. So, we can, we can start that process. I think, I think staff needs some direction in order to move forward and begin some presentations to the board.
Well, Commissioner Holmes, are you...
That's what the motion was.
Okay. Okay, well, it's good to have that conversation, that clarification.
Can you restate?
And that's why I'm just going to say, can we restate the motion?
And that's how I would interpret that motion, because I can't just bring you a resolution.
Exactly. To vote on T-Sploß.
Okay, well, can you, Patrick, state the motion so that we're clear, and then, of course, Commissioner Holmes, you can clarify if that's what you have in mind.
The way I would interpret that motion is the board would be directing staff to begin the prep work for a vote, an ultimate resolution voting Sploß to go on the ballot. That's, that's how I would...
Is that clear?
That's the motion.
Okay, so that's the motion, and do we have, have we had a second? Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we're still in the commissioner comments section. Is there any other comments or from any of the commissioners at this stage? Okay, if not, we will move into our next item, which states that our next meeting will be June the 6th at 9:00 for a regular Board of Commissioners meeting, and then we'll have one on June the 20th at 6:30 PM as a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And now we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Good night, everyone.